Alright, we are live sweetie pies. Uh, no, 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 that's been on me.
So where you want me to sit?
We are live sweetie pies. Get that chair right there. Beth, you can move that around as you please.
Why don't you be on the other side?
I can't see if I see your face or not.
How can I see?
So if I see your face?
Here, that way.
Sit right here.
Sit on the other side.
How am I gonna see what he's doing?
What about this?
No, that's not getting all of us.
I can't see on the other side. Is this getting both of you guys?
No. As long as you turn it.
Is everybody coming in first?
Yeah. No, we're interviewing Marcos Lopez first.
Oh, but I was saying, is everybody gonna be in the room?
Yeah, if they wanna come in.
Yeah, come on in.
Guys wanna come in?
Come on in. As we talk, we're gonna focus the camera on.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
You can't see on the other side?
No, of course not. This is not what you can do. No, you don't see it on the other... Yeah, I don't see it on the other side. I just have to stand up and do this thing here.
Well, just aiming, you know, that's right there is aimed at Shannon.
Yeah, you're gonna speak it first.
Now, both of us doing it.
Can you pull it back?
It's hard, it's very difficult.
Come up some. Go on in.
I got you.
We're gonna introduce the guy's name. We're gonna introduce everybody.
Just show them.
Just think a minute.
Are you in there?
Yeah, they all was over there.
Okay, I'm gonna probably leave out tomorrow. Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, so after shuttle leaves the lobby. Okay, and 11:00 AM, and...
What is this? Spies? Are these the people who have commented?
Yeah, those are the people who are watching.
What time do we turn back?
Good morning, everybody. Good morning. How you doing? We've already started.
Show on yet.
Okay, well, Facebook is on.
I gotta go. Okay.
Okay.
You know, I never went on Facebook Live before.
You haven't?
In the entrance of community service, Power 88 presents live call shows to inform, enlighten, and distinguish.
That's what I'm doing.
You wanna aim.
The music spreads on this program are not necessarily goals of the management of KCEP or the EOB.
Now, sit back, relax, and enjoy the program, or call in and participate at 647-3688.
Hello, this is The Village Voice. I'm your host, Miriam Gibson, bringing you a political agenda about the issues that concern the community, and ways to get involved in the political process rather than just going out and voting.
And now, here's your host.
Good morning. Good morning, everybody. How you doing? This is Miriam Gibson. Welcome to The Village Voice.
Thank you. Welcome.
We have an exciting... We're gonna have an exciting show today. We have Henry Thorne, that's running for Ward Five, uh, the city council Ward Five. He's on the... Hi, Henry, how you doing?
I'm fine. How you doing there?
Okay, great. We also have a music producer, Keith Hastings, from Boaz Entertainment. He's with us today. How you doing, Keith?
Good morning, good morning.
Oh, right. And we have our co-host here today that's gonna help us out, Shannon Churchwell. Hi, Shannon.
Hi, Las Vegas. How are you doing today? We also have a special guest that's gonna be talking about a very important subject, which is criminal justice. His name is Marcos Lopez.
Alright, how you doing, Marco? Okay, uh, we're gonna be talking about criminal justice, uh, with Marco. He's, uh, Marco is calling in from...
He's calling in from Carson City. He wants to talk about some legislation that we all need to rally behind to support some criminal justice reforms. This is something that the black community is greatly impacted by, as well as others, but especially disproportionately us. So Marcos is gonna be talking about some initiatives that, uh, we need to rally behind to see some reforms that are long overdue.
And just to remind you, uh, Village Voices is being Facebook Live, so I'm on Facebook Prince here in Las Vegas, throughout the country and the world. Please join us today. I would really like for you to hear our show today. Also, if there's any questions that you wanna have for our guests, send it to us at our email, villagevoices76@gmail.com, okay? And also, Village Voices is hosted, I mean sponsored by Reckon Sealing Clinic, and that telephone number is 702-763-4048. Seven... 702-763-4048. So keep, uh, contact us and we'll tell you about up and coming, uh, Reckon Sealing Clinic, okay? Let's go on with the show.
Okay, I would like to talk to our first guest, which is Marcos Lopez. He's calling in from Carson City. Marcos, are you there?
Hello?
Is Marcos on the line? We can't hear him. Okay, well, I wanted to get into the topic of criminal justice while they are queuing up Marcos. Um, the topic of criminal justice obviously has been very important to the African-American community because we are disproportionately affected by, um, over incarceration. Um, we're sentenced to prison sentences longer than any other ethnic group. And these are some of the things that Marcos is gonna touch on that we're trying to change legislatively. You know, when you have a crime and you see those, um, sentences, 10 years to life, whites are getting closer to the 10 years, blacks are getting closer to the life. And there are just so many things that are going on in our community that is causing the over incarceration of African-Americans. You can be locked up for a ticket. You could be locked up for sitting in a hotel while black barbecuing while black, talking on the phone while black, just so many different things. And it's caused the over incarceration of African-Americans in this country. And I would urge people to talk to their local elected officials because they have the power to change things. You know, we see how they have sanctuary cities and all of these different things for people who have broken certain laws, but they're getting sanctuary and things like that. Well, African-Americans didn't have that luxury. You see how marijuana is legal now, but so many African-Americans were locked up for simple drug possessions.
And people are now making millions off of it.
People are now making millions of dollars off of... If, if, if it's okay for people to make money and use marijuana now, then it was okay 20 years ago when they were locking up masses of black people. So we need to have those people freed from prison, records expunged, and they need to be made whole, you know? And I call on the Democratic Party especially because 90% of African-Americans voted Democrat in this last election. That's 90%.
And we're looking for something this time. We're coming to collect, okay? Where vote is not gonna be taken for granted anymore. We're gonna put our money, put our vote where, where we're getting a benefit from. So hey, far as I'm concerned, the vote's up to grabs, okay?
Well, the votes are up to grabs, you know? So we have a lot of people that are trying to ask for your votes, and they need to have a, a plan. Uh, people call it a black agenda. And the thing is, black people have never asked to be treated superiorly in this country. We've always had to fight just to be treated equally in this country. So it, it, it means a lot when you actually take someone's freedom away from them. It means, uh, it's devastating to the family when you take someone's life away from them. So we're just gonna... Marco, we're having technical difficulties getting Marcos on the line, so we're just gonna go into...
Okay, now...
Yeah, I can hear you.
Hey, yes, yeah, it seems to be a little problem there. Um, yeah, um, so I'm up here in Carson City, um, with my organization, Americans for Prosperity Nevada, and we, we're really tackling on criminal justice reform was one of our priorities. Uh, really five major areas. Uh, that's prison reform, bail reform, civil asset forfeiture reform, uh, indigent defendant reform, which has to deal with making sure everybody has a right to counsel, make sure everyone has a right to have representation in the courtroom, and, uh, re-facilitating, uh, re-entry into society and making sure that, uh, we're doing everything we can to make sure we are putting people in the best track forward when they're released from prison. Um, but this is something that, you know, my organization has been focusing on for a while now. Uh, we focus really on breaking down barriers, helping individuals advance in society. Uh, last December, we were instrumental in helping, uh, the first major piece of criminal justice reform legislation pass, uh, in, uh, in really decades. It was called the First Step Act. It made its way to Congress in late December, uh, and the president signed it into law. Uh, but it was the first step really, uh, to really try to address these issues at the national level. And we're really trying to address these issues now at the state level. And there's a great bill in there, uh, to, to address a lot of these things. Uh, I recommend everyone looking at the, uh, the Justice Reinvestment Initiative. It was, uh, presented by the Nevada Advisory Commission on the Administration of Justice. Uh, if these policies are signed into law, we're able to avert an 89% increase of the projected prison population by 2028. And, you know, we're gonna try to avert all these... This money that's saved, about $640 million, uh, and really drive them into effective policies and practices that will reduce recidivism. Um, I, I think, you know, when I'm out there in the community, I, I operate in all communities, and it's sometimes, i- it's misunderstood by a good portion of the population that a good portion, about 98% of everyone that's currently incarcerated, will one day be released back into society.
Right.
And we should try to help them and achieve so they, they can have successful lives and be productive members of society. And no one had, no one wants to be a criminal. I think that's one thing that, that sometimes is lost in this debate. Uh, most crimes tend to be crimes of necessity.
Mm-hmm. And also, I think that once a person serves their time, they should be able to vote again. You know, I don't think that a person should be tagged for the rest of their life and lose their American right to vote for the rest of their lives, uh, no matter what crime they committed. If they did their time, they need to be able to vote again. And so I'm really, I'm really glad that you all... I'm, I'm really excited that we saw with the First Step Act, that we saw bipartisan legislation because the Democrats and the Republicans need to come together for us to see real, um, criminal justice reform in this country. So I would urge all of the listeners, whether you're a Democrat, Republican, no matter who you caucus with, no matter who you vote for, urge the people that are running that you want to vote for, or the people that are in office, regardless of their party affiliation, to support these initiatives. Now, one of the things that you, um, are working on also is the forfeiture aspect of things. Can you touch a little bit on that?
Yeah, of course. So civil asset forfeiture is, is a really weird system. Um, it really flips the justice system how it's supposed to be on its head. Uh, so, you know, we have the Fifth and Fourteenth Amendment, basically that say, you know, no one should be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process. Uh, what makes this system so, so, so messed up is that it, it makes the defendant have to prove that they are not guilty. Uh, and it just goes completely against all notion of, of what the justice system should be, of, of, of decades, of centuries of, of legal tradition. Uh, so let's say, um, a classic example, um, there was an individual out in Virginia, uh, you know, he was using his parents' car to go down the street to sell drugs. Uh, he got caught and he got arrested for it. Uh, they actually went after his parents' car, his house, uh, because they were saying, you know, you have to prove to us that you didn't buy this house, you didn't buy this car using drug money. They completely flipped the whole justice system on its head. Because it, uh, you know, yeah, if you look at these court cases, it's ridiculous.
It's all set up for the black community too.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
Well, we've gotta get to the point where, I mean, and also, poor people are targeted. So, I mean, you know, especially when it comes to tickets and stuff, people struggle to get their property, struggle to get their cars, and then for the slightest thing, it's taken from them, and then they're back to square one. Anyway, we would really love to bring you on for a further in-depth as we go on. Uh, Marcos, it was awesome talking to you. For those who wanna get involved with you and your organization, is how would they get in contact with you?
Uh, so definitely reach out. Uh, our website is www.americansforprosperity.org. You can go down to Nevada Tap, uh, and reach out to us. We have petitions online relating to, uh, civil asset forfeiture and other things, uh, criminal justice reform related, uh, or like us on, on Facebook, Americans for Prosperity Nevada, or on Twitter at AFP Nevada. Um, those, and, uh, if you guys are ever down there.
Thank you so much. Well, thank you so much, Marcos, and keep up the good fight. Thank you so much for all that you're doing to just, uh, make a dent in this very important issue that we all could be affected by any day. It, it can affect any of us at any time. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And you have a great day.
Thank you. Special guest, Henry Thorne. Hi, Henry.
Hey, Henry.
How y'all doing today?
We are glad to have you here because I know that a lot of people are very curious to know what you have in store for Ward Five. You're running for city council of Ward Five.
I got a change in store.
Alright.
A change, change for our peoples, change for Ward Five.
Okay.
It's time to do something for Ward Five, you know, so yeah, I got a change coming, so I put my, I put my name in the hat, you know?
Now, for all the, uh, people that... We have a lot of new people coming into Las Vegas and, uh, that may not know who Henry Thorne is. So who is Henry Thorne?
Henry Thorne is a black man born right here in Las Vegas, Nevada, in 1960.
Okay.
Right here, from four miles, from four miles, I was born in Southern Memorial Hospital. That's how deep my roots is, okay? Went to school here, went to Mac Kelly, went to High Park, went to Clark High School, went to college at UNLV, came back from college, went to pros in Canada, came back and opened up a clothing store called Hen His Fashions, might in fact, opened up three of them, and put all the kids in our community to work.
So you're also a businessman.
Oh, yeah, also, yes.
Yeah.
I done had three clothing stores. My brothers-in-law done had clothing stores. We entrepreneurs, and we have went on to make other peoples entrepreneurs also, so you know?
Fantastic.
I came back, I started a youth foundation called The Dog Catchers Youth Foundation. They've been here now for 37 years.
Fantastic.
We have sent more kids to college than high schools, you know? And not only that, you see how AAU is real big and popular here in Las Vegas?
Yeah.
The Dog Catchers was the head of that, you know? So I'm, I'm here in Las Vegas, I'm here for our peoples, I'm here, I'm here to make a change, you know? I'm here to make a change.
And I know that you are very... Well, you lived in the community that you're representing, and you also live there now.
Yes, you do.
So, uh, you are aware of all the, the, uh, problems that is being faced in the community that, uh, you feel as though that, uh, it's not being addressed by other elected officials. And so you, you plan, you have some ideas in mind of what you could implement in that position as a city councilperson for Ward Five, and so we'd like to hear what those are.
Yeah, what do you think Ward Five really needs?
Yeah, what are they need?
You, you know, I'm really not a politician kind of guy. You know, I'm a fighter, you know? Uh, my thing is to get the, get things done. I'm not gonna sit around and talk about it. I'm gonna get it done. So right now, our community need first jobs. You know, they need jobs from always, from 65 all the way to 12 years old. You know, back when I grew up, we had EOB. EOB used to bring jobs to our community. So the kids... I lived in a project, so by me living in the projects, we got paid like $7 an hour to keep your neighborhood clean. So imagine how proud of we was of our neighborhood 'cause we worked there and kept it clean.
Exactly.
That's what we need to bring back to housing, special housing authorities, you know? Housing authorities give out a lot of money, but housing authorities should take that money and redevelop that money back into housing authorities so the kids, the young kids in there to go to work in housing authorities to keep their neighborhood looking good.
That's why. It's important to be proud of where you are, where you come from.
And that's what made us so proud because we kept our neighborhood clean. Not only that, you know, our schools.
Yeah.
You know, schools are tough on Ward Five, you know?
Yeah, it really is.
And, and I noticed, I came to, a few years ago, I went to the school board, and I asked the school board, you know, why don't you dock a school on the west side? Because you have business owners that live in Summerlin, Green Valley, they donate to their schools. But we don't have businesses in Ward Five to donate to our schools. So I went to the school district and said, you know those rotten computers you guys don't want? Those old apples you don't want? Donate them to Mac Kelly, donate them to Joe Mack and Kim Carson. That way, you know, our kids can have some going. We need homes. We need affordable homes for everybody. You know, we don't need to raise the price up here on, on homes to move everybody out of our community. We wanna rebuild Ward Five with the people still in Ward Five. We don't wanna rebuild Ward Five and everybody gone, and a whole new peoples come in. No.
Well, affordable housing is very important because as you see that growth...
Yes.
You know, you do see a lot of gentrification in certain neighborhoods, really throughout the country. So it is important to keep affordable housing right there in Ward Five for people who wanna stay in Ward Five.
Yeah, exactly.
And benefit from the nice things that's coming.
And not only that, you have senior citizens, you know, they don't work no more, you know? But you raising the rent on senior citizen and stuff, how they gonna pay for it? We already homeless here is outrageous, you know? I remember one time in Ward Five, we never had homeless, you know? So I figured the homeless came on the move to take the land, you know? 'Cause this land is so powerful, so popular, everybody want Ward Five land. But like I tell people in Ward Five, you're gonna have to redevelop that land. You know, if you got, if you gotta, if you gotta, how could I say it? If you gotta sell it, you sell it, but if you don't have to sell it, do something on it, you know? Find some way to reach out to someone to help you re- remodel your land. Now, what I look at is they remodeling downtown every day.
Constantly.
There's funding, and that's, and that's Ward Five. So I don't understand why can't we get some of that money to develop Jackson Street, the Hextorit area over here in west side?
And businesses that come into the area and also, uh, contribute to help, uh, employment.
Yes, it do. I have the union behind me.
Okay, and what union is that?
Uh, I have 872.
Okay.
Okay, and believe me, I'm the kind of person you just can't buy. I, I just don't sell out, you know what I'm saying? I met some good peoples that wanna be there behind me, and I, they told me what they wanted, and I told them what I wanted. And what I wanted, I want redevelopment coming through this neighborhood. I want you to bring businesses in our neighborhood, but I want our peoples to stay here and benefit off them businesses.
Exactly.
You know, and not up there, you know, up there like on, on Gowan and Alexander, they love their horses, you know? And they wanna keep their horses, you know what I'm saying? And we're gonna make sure they keep their ranches and stuff up there, you know? We're not gonna turn that into some private and that. We're gonna keep that.
Yeah.
You know, so mainly, I'm here to work for you. You are my community, and I'm here to work for you.
Alright, Henry, and how could people that wanna know more about you or get involved with your campaign and really get this thing steamrolling, how could they get in contact with you?
Well, let me just real be honest, you know, it's hard 'cause some peoples already brainwashed, some peoples already, you know, they, they need to sit back and say, Henry, let's come help Henry. Henry done helped. Henry and the Dog Catches and our whole community have helped everybody. It's time, if you wanna change, help Henry Thorne. Now, you can call me at 702-427-3726. That's my number. You know, we got campaign coming, we got well sites coming, we got everything's coming. One day, you're gonna wake up in the morning and you're gonna see, you're gonna be so surprised, you know?
Repeat that, repeat that number again.
My number, my, my number is 702-427-3726. And let me tell you, our youth, our youth are hurt. You notice it ain't been no killing. It ain't been no gang violence. So right now, community, let's get behind our kids, support our kids, 'cause ain't no violence going on now, but when the violence go on, when the violence go on, we quick to react. Let's react right now. Let's find a way to help our kids right now and keep it safe for our kids. Open these recreation centers up for our kids, open these after-school programs up for our kids, please. That's the way we're gonna make a difference in Ward Five.
Thank you very much, Henry, for coming on and explaining your campaign for us.
Thank you.
I know the people appreciate that much. Uh, Henry needs your support. We have his number. Come out and help knock on doors for him to help get him elected, okay?
Also, the United Black Democratic Caucus is going to be having a town hall. We had a town hall during the special elections last time. We're gonna be doing that again. Keep an open mind. I know that maybe you already have, you know, your mindset on who you wanna vote for or who you like, but I think it's worthwhile to just keep an open mind and don't be so quick to make a decision on who you're gonna vote for before you hear everybody out. So you can always get more information about the United Black Democratic Caucus. Go to www.villagevoicesshow.com. There's a link on there. Thank you so much for coming out.
Thank you. Uh, I really appreciate it 'cause now you letting the people know that is election in Ward Five.
That's right.
Thank you.
Okay, now, our next guest is Keith Hastings from Boaz Entertainment.
Boaz.
Hi, Keith.
Good morning, good morning.
How you doing?
Hey, Keith, how are you?
My two favorite girls.
Alright. Oh, you're making us blush. So what's going on? You got some hot, hot stuff coming out?
Yeah, it's on fire a little bit.
Alright.
Uh, well, first off, I wanna say, um, good morning to everybody, uh, and all my Boaz Entertainment friends out there. You know how to get in touch with us at boazentertainmentgroup.com. And what we are is an artist management company. We don't try to promise you no dreams. You know, we, uh, try to work with you and get you to the next level.
Yes.
Uh, really quickly, we have a, a very important play with Q. Allen King, "Kendrick Will Raise a Man."
Oh, that play is awesome.
Yes, I love that.
We're in the road a little bit, putting that work in there. And it's gonna be, um, debuting in LA at the West End's Performing Arts Theater. It's Bishop Blake. Uh, they say if you go in there with Blake, you can go anywhere. Some mega church there. Uh, this year, uh, well, in LA, we have a fabulous Marvin King. And Marvin King, as you know, was with Prince and phenomenal singer, a good friend of mine. Uh, we, uh, we wanted, we started here in Vegas. We wanna make sure that Vegas people get the opportunity to go down and, uh, enjoy the play as well.
Okay.
So Q, uh, I wanna make sure I mention to you guys, we have a shuttle bus that's leaving from the Orleans. It's gonna be on Saturday. It leaves at, uh, 11:00 AM. It's $45, a round trip turnaround, but the good part is you participate in the red carpet, which of course you, Miriam, you know, I had you there. So the red carpet, and you have entrance into the show with the $45. And a good part about it is that after the show is over with, we were invited to, uh, do an after-party. And it's a historic California jazz, jazz and blues museum. Now, what kinda got me off that was that they just gave us the after-party and want us to come here and have a good time. So the play is picking up that type of steam. You wanna make sure that if you're living in Vegas, then you wanna come. The Orleans, that is Saturday, 11:00 AM, okay?
Alright.
Pack your bags, get on the, get on the bus, and we'll, after after-party, we'll get you back home.
Well, it's definitely a play worth watching. It was here in Vegas for a little while. Awesome, awesome, awesome. Alright, why don't you tell us a little bit about this song that we're about to play right now?
Well, uh, William Jordan was kind of one of our first, uh, major artists that we started working with.
Yeah, I know.
Some of you know.
He's great, fantastic. I love it.
He's Eddie Kendrick's Reborn Again, that's what I call him. Okay.
Alright, let's get into this song.
We wanna play fade out with the song, Village Voices.
Thank you for tuning in, and this is a Boaz Entertainment production.
Okay, and the name of the song is?
Uh, that's not the song. Break My Heart.
What song is that?
Is that the Come Together? I don't know. That's Come Together, right? Does that come together?
No, that's not the song.
No?
That's not the song.
What song is that?
I have no clue.
Just let it play out.
You guys should've had that queued up. I thought you had them against you.
Yeah, yeah. There you have it. Take that.
What this world come to? It's getting to the point where we don't know what to do. Of all we learn from our past. And if we don't spread love, this won't last. We blame each other, we're dead, that's who did that. All it's gonna do is hold us back. What about the child born yesterday? Can we have a place to play? Can we find a better way? Power eighty-eight. You know the rules of the game, the people chose Power eighty-eight, we're the people's station.
Oh, thank you.
You gotta come back on, yeah.
All right.
We coming.
Vote Henry Thorne.
Yeah, but what, what's up with you, um, gonna play a band?
It's a rap.
Put it back on.
It's a rap.
Okay.
Village Voice.
All right.